Okay, number two, approval on the agenda.
Any changes, Your Honor?
Uh, no changes this evening.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call roll.
McGinn?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Chick-Pah?
Yes.
Stucker? Yeah. Ray?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Okay, number three, presentation of petitions and other communications. A, request to vacate Outlaw S., all state subdivision. Uh, this has been put back on the agenda. I think there was some misunderstanding on what P&amp;Z sent forward with their decision compared to what staff... I think they were just misunderstanding the council, didn't quite understand what staff, because I think staff is okay with it. So, anyway, I put it back on the agenda for discussion. Then I'll start out.
Well, I think we have a purpose. You know, we have a purpose for P&amp;Z, but the thing that I'm kind of writing about on this after thinking about it is, is... I guess I just don't know why we're trying to keep somebody who looks like an old property, but out in firm, uh, decisions that we've made, bringing that error directly to the road. It's that's kind of the concern I have with it. Usually, I rarely went against what P&amp;Z's done in the past, because that's what the role is down here, but we... We vote on their decisions because we have the final say.
Right.
So, I guess it just takes a second look at this, I think.
And for background, for those who weren't, this was on the agenda two years ago, maybe, or three years ago, kind of. And planning zoning recommended it, and then it came to the council, and it was, it was declined. So now we've got just the opposite. It was planning zoning, denying, came to the council, that the misunderstanding, I think, was that you guys weren't sure what staff... So, and we have staff here this evening. Dan?
Yes.
What, what is your thought on this? Because the council's kind of looking at staff.
Oh, okay. So, is there a larger drawing that kind of shows a bigger part of the city of that location? Because I think there's two ways to look at this. On the one hand, you've got a little bit of traffic flow from that whole area, and there could possibly be a school there. So, we want to make sure that we're thinking ahead about that.
This is better?
Yeah, that's perfect. Thank you. So, you're kind of seeing the lower left-hand corner, is that Outlaw?
No, Outlaw is here. Crestwood, correct.
Yeah, so that's Crestwood going east and west, and the possible school site is just to the east. Yeah, right in there. So, we want to make sure we've got a good street network to, 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 to serve that part of town in the future. And, and I think that's one of the arguments for, for keeping that Outlaw S. as a city street. But if you look at it, um, it has a golf course to the west, which means there'll never be any lots there. And if there's just one home being built on that land to the east, it really, it really doesn't lend itself very much... It doesn't lend itself very well for a public street, because it's a, that makes it a very expensive public street. We can still accomplish that traffic flow by building that north-south street farther east onto the neighbor, into the neighbor's property. If we extend Crestwood to the east, uh, that, and that way we can load that street with houses on both sides. That's, that's a better way to build the street. So... Long-winded explanation, so if anyone has any questions, I'd like to...
So, based on that, what you're saying, Dan, you know, one thing we've come up with as a council, at least this council, until January of 2022, is that the option to go down further to make that street, we throw that off the table. That's just too costly, probably wouldn't be able to do it. It'd be such an understanding I have. So, I, I just don't see any reason why anyone off of Crestwood would ever need that access that way at this point in time. But that's, that just might be your...
Well, at the last meeting, I went out and took a look at that, and that property would require an extensive amount of money to bring it up to where you can build houses on that lot, on those lots in there. And I don't know of any developer that'd want to spend that kind of money for that, for six houses, and then we're going to build, what, a $1.5 million road to accommodate six houses? That's probably never going to happen. Not anytime soon, anyway.
Right.
So... I, I'm kind of in your court, Stephen. I don't know why you don't allow somebody to build a house on their own property.
Zach? I was going to ask Zach, where were you planning on building? So, I've heard a couple different... Yeah. Yeah. Brought us, committed, uh, okay.
Okay, so you're in, in a lot quite a way.
We're never going to sell any of those lots. We want it strictly for our needs, so...
That would be to that lot about a third of the way.
Yeah.
According to that drawing.
We don't know.
Give or take, right? Somewhere in that territory.
How much of the house would be on where the road is?
We want to build right on that.
Well, because if you've been out there before, the water's really steep.
Right.
And if we didn't, weren't able to get any setbacks or not be able to access that, then that would be a big detriment to be able to build a house. Because we wanted to be up close to it, because it lends itself to walkout, but we didn't have that, kind of go further back. And that would cause a lot of problems, because of all the effort we got to do to build that out. Well, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the request to vacate Outlaw S.
Okay, the first step, I think, is... That would need a motion or to direct staff to do an appraisal on it. Once we get appraisal of the, of the area we're talking about, Ed will get that. He would bring that back, and then the council...
No, that's right.
That's what we need to do initially, rather than, you could approve it at, at some point, but the appraisal was to be done first. You know, and then my motion that we... I just want to make sure, as, as, Steve. Craig, go ahead.
Fred Griner, I'm just here as a concerned citizen somewhat, because as the developer of Crestwood, some of the things that we did in '14, I just think everybody needs to be made aware of. I've got all kinds of stuff and shit that we've set up. But, um, if you can move that up, just a little bit up to the upper right, there you go. Getting everybody's way here. Right here, there is 15 lots there, and Zach owns this here, but there's 15 houses that could be built right here on this future street going down to Fairway Stores. Uh, sanitary sewer runs right down the middle of that street, so does the water. So, that's going to be fairly easy for some developer, it sure won't be me, uh, to build homes there. And then, if you could purchase the property here, you could put 15 homes on each side of that street. So, you know, if there is a school in this area someday, that's great. The boon's going to grow somewhere, and I would guess it's going to be out in the southeast area is the most likely. Right now, uh, what you were talking about, uh, Steve, that is a lot that Zach owns there. That is not a vacated, or that's not a right-of-way right there on that corner. At least, all the drawings that I have, it's not vacated. Uh, it's a lot, uh, to be built on. So, um, there's nothing showing, you know, extending east, but it could to tie into a future street here. So, something would have to be worked out if you plan on extending Crestwood further east. Um, yes, this road, it'd be several hundred thousand dollars. The base is already there to pour and pave that road based on what I know this cost. Um, but the future traffic, if, if this would be vacated, future traffic, if they have kids going to school, they're going to have to come up here, come all the way over here, to Lynn, back up here to Hancock to get there, unless you do extend this to the east and then come back to the north. Uh, you do have a lot of topo issues that Zach was talking about. And, uh, yeah, these lots, I actually have engineers' drawings. I considered doing that, but because of the topo and the amount of fill it would take just to get decent lots, they'll all be walkout-type, uh, houses if they were to be built. And we, the sewer can be extended. Uh, this is just deep enough to go about 500 feet to the north, and then it stops before it hits to that right-of-way for that range. And then it comes down from Hancock about 500 feet to elevation at work. So, that would be a cost to the property owner, probably, to put sanitary sewer in. But my concern is, is just the future growth, the boom, and limiting yourself on what you may do. But, uh, somebody may put homes in here someday. Or, in this area, Hancock gets extended all the way out to Sneddon. That's been talked about. Obviously, everything takes money, but that might be federal money, because it's an arterial street. Whereas the others would be up to a... But those are my comments, and I have plenty of time.
Concern. Anyone else? Stephen?
Right, that's better. Again, my motion that we just construct to have the appraisal.
Second.
Call roll.
Stein?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Chick-Pah?
Yes.
Stucker? Yes. Ray?
Yes.
McGinn?
I think I have something else. I washed it today, and I noticed, and maybe carried it too, the amount of debris out there. Does anyone know what that's from?
Yeah, um, the amount of debris in there, what was happening is, um, a couple of people... Now, this doesn't count for all of it, but a couple of people dumped in there, so I wasn't sure where it came from. Um, I think it was some of those houses that were built on Crestwood. I know one of the neighbors told me that.
Small, the white thing.
White van, I mean, a lot of stuff. And there's some other stuff. I, uh, I was talking to some of the, the folks in town that, uh, obviously, um, I was asking for filler, and when they put it on there, it had some tile on it and some, some concrete in it.
Bricks and glass, and it looks like someone just scooped up an old farmhouse and just dumped it right there.
Yeah, some junk. And so, that was the end of that.
Okay.
So, I gone on after that, but...
So, it's yours?
It's not responsible.
Okay.
But there was a little bit, there was a little bit of, uh, eighty percent of it was isolated for filler, that wasn't filler. But then, uh, there has been a couple times, just some of these, some people have been down there dumping stuff, that was on, I'm not sure.
I, I found concrete, and then those, that bag of concrete, right at the end of the drive.
There's some stuff there.
I just want to make sure we didn't have any people dumping it all on there.
Okay, anyone else? The set of public hearing for October 19, 2020, at 6:00 PM, considers rezoning of property at 1804 West being eyes now our avenue from R2, 1 and 2 family residential district to A1 agriculture district in Boone, Iowa. You written on that, so I guess we're setting it here.
Second. Call roll.
Norman?
Yes.
Chick-Pah?
Yes.
Stucker? Yes. Ray?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Okay, C, set a public hearing for October 19, 2020, at 6:00 PM, consider the rezoning of the property 316 Harrison Street from R3, uh, multifamily residential district to C2 Limited Commercial District, Boone, Iowa.
Motion to approve.
Call roll.
Chick-Pah?
Yes.
Stucker? Yes. Ray?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
And four, report of standing committees, policy administration, DJ, North Port, Public Safety, Transportation, Stephen. Update on lights and posts.
I guess I don't know exactly. I went and got bids like, like you requested. Comes in, the buy four, get four is laptop closed, or laptop only. Laptop only. It's looking for direction on there. We had to fill the rest of you in that weren't on public safety. I brought it to concern that we have seven poles that got damaged in the ratio, and they're not fixable, not rebuildable. And I went pricing things out, and a cast fiberglass pole similar to what we have is somewhere around nine hundred... Nine hundred to a thousand dollars more per pole for each. There's 44 poles to replace in the long run. Looking for a direction to go. This is a newer option with, with brackets and flower pot things. This is kind of the way that a lot of communities are going. Just looking for your input, and then we will have to discuss finances and probably get into that.
These are, these will be what, six and a half feet?
Wow.
Oh, 12 feet?
Yes.
Oh, okay, now, that's long. So, the buy four, get four, just for the tops?
It's just the tops.
The limbs?
The land, the land part.
But they're multi, I mean, you, these are a flagpole, or, or a banner, or...
Yeah, the way I have it priced right now is flags, banner, and electrical socket each one, and, and the light at the top.
And they got pathway in there down the road, you could put fiber in, you know, for camera, or...
Speakers?
Whatever. Speakers, yeah, speakers, so...
Five different pathways for different communication, or...
If anyone's ever... And if they feel that, very sturdy, very solid.
About twice the strength that we have now. One of the, one of the big things that we're fighting now is we've lost, or losing a multiple per year with the weight of flowers and stuff and the winds. And the other ones just started rusting away. They were put in ninety-seven, eight, I had the guessing pretty close. And the bases are fiberglass, but the metal inside of it's rusted away, so it's just falling apart. I rebuilt probably five or six of them by taking them apart.
And some are insured.
Yeah, yeah, the insurance has been taken there, because it's weather-related.
Yeah. The gesture's been made aware of, and we don't know how much yet. So, how many poles are, were damaged in storms?
Seven.
So, the insurance, we placed seven of them.
I have, I also have one open claim with a company that hit one, that everything is still good, to my knowledge, my last communication with them, that they're willing to pay for one also.
Sure, looking at replacing eight of the 44, and then over time, we're going to need to replace these as well. Also, I think it's important that council give a sense, we don't let them, and they want to go through, understanding that it could be four or five years down the road, and one forty-four get all forty-four replaced, the cost, and... Rather than just replacing because we want to replace them. Jared, do you have something to add?
Yeah, they look really similar, and these are a lot stronger. We have those baskets, they're like 200 pounds, the basket when they're wet. So, it's, it's just wiser to go with the stronger of them. Um, because there is a lot of weight, when we water, and when we get some wind going, they're difficult.
How much are these? Ninety-six, right?
Do you hear, the setup is going to be... I know.
About 24.
Twenty-four hundred. Twenty-four hundred for that setup with... With the, uh, with the light. And the fiberglass and cast aluminum is right around thirty-three hundred, so... The pole, the cast aluminum pole, fiberglass aluminum pole's almost the cost of just the whole setup.
Not going to have it lost, correct?
And this setup is the one you're recommending for thirty-three hundred?
This, this setup I'm recommending comes in at twenty-four hundred total.
So, it's stronger, it's cheaper, it's got a lot of...
And lasts longer, too.
I just, I think it's great. I, the number one request I get about downtown, the farmer's market, they ask every year if they can take stuff on their poles.
Yeah.
Ratify, because they can use it everywhere. It's just they can, they could change it out for everything from proper to downtown events. I love it.
And I, I personally like the color. I think the color is just perfect. I think that's great.
Hey, you're hard with the map.
Troy, you're bringing it in. Purple and gold. You and I, this is...
Easy.
So, our... Anyway, we asked, the committee recommended that we, let me get, get these quotes or some ideas, and come back to us what you get. We're kind of working up against those sort of times here, because we get that time of year, we're going to start getting cold, and they get these orders, it's what, about four weeks?
Four weeks lead time. I will have to change, I will have to change the mounting. That's, they're, right now, they're into a concrete pier, and I will have to change that, so...
We got insurance that we're waiting on, but I'd say if the quicker we get to that proof, and when that money comes in, then we can get these switched out, and we can get some put back in before the street ends. I would make that recommendation.
Second. Call roll.
Stucker? Yes. Ray?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Chick-Pah?
Yes.
Um, next time you talk, to many students.
We'll have a meeting at 4:30 on Wednesday, the 14th. I'm sure they're already signed me on.
Yes, sir. Economic Development, correct.
Uh, just an update, Your Honor, on our economic development manager search. We're still working through it, and we're going to put it back out for another thirty days. See if we can refine our search and, and get a bigger cross-section of applicants we roll on. So, that will be coming back in October November. Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Department reports, uh, going to fish for Ed. North Port, Ron. Uh, Finance Officer, Andrea. City Attorney, Jeff. North Port. Uh, Director of Public Works, John Rouse.
Yes, Your Honor, I got a couple things. Um, with everything that happened this morning, we probably will not be able to get to the painting of our parking stalls in the yellow parking areas, due to the fact it's getting colder, and we're still prepping for winter. So, that is one thing that's probably not going to be done. All the, the road, the parrows, the crossing logs, all that stuff have been done, basically, the parking stalls, stuff like that. We will not have time to do that, so that is something that we'll do at the first thing this year, to make sure it's done, that it's just high rate damage. So, um, I talked to the company, TFR Enterprises, from Leanne, Texas. They're going to come do the grinding of our pile. You know, right now, it's matted, and then after matted, they're going to go to Ames for a couple weeks, and they're going to be here within like three weeks, four weeks, weather permitting, make sure, you know, it's all depending on equipment breaking down and stuff like that. With that being said, we've done a survey of the community, and we've got seven trees, marsh, patches of trees that we got to take them down. I sent out a contract last Friday for bids. There are seven local companies. I just figured, was, I gotta get all these free for FEMA, so I've sent the seven of the locals that has a tree trimming license with the city. So, I sent them out, they're due next Monday. So, and now, that's the time we have Park Commission meeting. Seventy trees, we have right now, well, if you budget a thousand dollars to do tree work this year. I have an ashtray contract worth thirty, thirty-two thousand, twenty-five dollars that's already awarded, they're going to start a whole metro, okay? So, I have sixty-eight thousand, seventy-five dollars remaining. We do twenty thousand dollars for tree trimming, twenty thousand dollars for, uh, hazardous tree removal, and then we had, uh, the fifty thousand dollars for ashtrays and stumps. So, if we use that excess money, or extra money, to do this contract, we might be a little short, we might be going over a little bit, but if we get bring-in verse through FEMA, we should be able to cover it. It's a, let's say, seventy-five point five manage under each other. Um, we're hoping that this is going to work. We have all the data in place, we have pictures, we have GPS locations, all that stuff. Hopefully, FEMA will play ball, and, and we'll get it back, okay?
No strings attached? No strings attached?
I hope so.
Okay.
That's the game. But, but...
So, seventy trees, that you said, yeah. So, multiple companies, it, because if one company bids it, how long would it take them, two years or three years to take down seventy trees? Why not?
Hell, no. We do a couple months for ashtrays, and they're like eighty, ninety trees.
I don't think that... Just want to get them done.
Also, when it's not...
They're hazardous, need to come down.
Also, in this contract, it states, you can cut it down and take them off of the pile, which is a lot faster, three months, cut them all out and chip it up.
Right.
And haul it out there before the shipping company is done, the grinding company. Once that grinding company's done, then it's the tree company's responsibility to take care of that. But if they could come in in five weeks and take them down and just haul them out there, lot better. Yeah, so, and the other thing on that is that they don't do stumps. FEMA does not declare stumps as a hazard, so they stump removals not in this. So, next year, we'll have a lot of stuff to do. So, right now, we have the bids coming, and we're going to look at them, I'll talk to Phil about them, and we'll see what, where we're at with price. If we're close, we'll get it approved through the Park Commission, but if it's crazy, like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, go ahead, start just chopping things, you know, if you're moving trees, to try to get it to a budgetary number that we can handle. Uh, and I'll make sure Phil and the Park Commission's on board, and we'll go with that. But that's sort of the game plan. I'd like to get it done now, because if they can haul it out there, it's a lot easier, and it's a lot quicker. And then we'll be done. We just wait for FEMA to come, and we do the paperwork. So, that is the game plan right now. Any questions? Where's Bud?
Yeah. All right, thank you. Thank you. City Engineer, Dan.
Number one is, um, the community development block grant, and we're successful in getting our six hundred thousand dollar grant. This is the actual contract with the Iowa Economic Development Authority. So, if anyone has any questions, I think they're one of those, we need them.
Motion to approve. Call roll.
Ray?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Chick-Pah?
Yes.
Stucker? Yes.
Thank you. Item number two is, uh, an agreement where it's similar to forward to administer this grant, so... This is a twenty thousand dollar agreement, and we'll use it once.
So, we'll...
Call roll.
Bird?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Chick-Pah?
Yes.
Stucker? Yes. Ray?
Yes.
Thank you, please. Uh, next up, Public Safety Chief Adams.
No report, Your Honor.
How about Chief Louisville?
No report, Your Honor.
Uh, City Administrator, Bill. Uh, number six, consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that need to be discussed separately? I'll see, I, I don't know, yeah, that's a previous meeting. Yeah, previous, minutes of previous meeting.
Call roll.
McGinn?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Chick-Pah?
Yes.
Stucker? Yes. Ray?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Then number seven, we have nothing. Great, I have no comments. Number nine, any councilman comments this evening?
They did. Seeing those doors all covered up on the sides, yeah.
To give you an idea, the other set, which we gave you some comments, are you going to do those? Probably a ballpark around thirty thousand. We can come for this, this year, twenty-two, to do it, or they're, they're, they're fine, they're just, they'll wait a few years. Just, just as, if you have a high cost that... Okay, very good. Any other council comments? Any public comments for items not on the agenda? Yes?
I brought some papers, and I wanted to address the council about what is going on with one of the members.
Could you state your name, please, for the minutes?
Waller Cook.
Thank you.
And I have some papers to pass out to the people that might want to read this.
Okay. Justin, thank you.
I wondered, our city go through an ethics code, or anything on that, or maybe a violation of somebody on one of the boards, and I could not find anything for the ethics. So, we have somebody running on... So, we have somebody running on the park board that is accusing me of mishandling funds to my nonprofit. I had to file a case of defamation by slander and harassment on this particular person. And I don't think it's very ethical that she would be still, this day, sitting on the board with facing this in court. And I saw that the city does have a harassment policy under forty dot zero two. So, I did file harassment charges on her, and I do have a police report for that, but I just don't think it's very ethical that she's on a board, and yet she's on reelection, and she's re-running. If she's gonna do this to me and the business, what else is she gonna do? She has injured myself, and my nonprofit.
So your question asks, is it, can she be on a board?
My question, I guess, for you guys would be to reconsider her being on a board, and reconsider her either running again, because she has injured myself, and she has injured my nonprofit.
I don't know.
She's blatantly accused me of criminal activity, that is not true. And I do have a paper from Mark Wallen in there, and they did investigate me, the state of Iowa did, and there is complaints against me or my nonprofit. But people are, are believing her that I have to run at the state of Iowa. And which now I, I have lost donations, I've lost supporters, and everything because of this.
I'm not sure on how, I'm just being honest, I don't know how the election laws work, and who can, who can run and who can't. Maybe that's Jim, maybe. Yeah, I don't know of any reason that she could not run. It's a matter you have in the courts, why is that not going to resolve it?
I'm sorry, what was that?
You have filed a lawsuit involving the allegations that you made here against that individual, and I don't know that the city council would wanna get involved in your litigation, pick one side or the other.
I have.
Might I finish?
Yes.
She was elected to that position, and there are specific rules that would apply, in removal of a public official, by my knowledge, I've not seen or heard of anything that would justify that, so, those, those, my knowledge, I don't, the city council has, and would have the authority to remove, remove her from the park board. Andy, this is still pending, you still have a case?
Yes, under court rule, we can set it up her trial, we are going to trial, but my, I wasn't asking you to get involved. I guess I was more going after it as an ethical part of this.
Right. Well, I think, you know, to, to your point, I mean, you have, you have civil litigation, Andy.
Correct.
So, first, we wanna see how this plays out, to my suggestion.
Okay.
But I don't think this body would have anything to say over who you're talking about, because that's a separate elected board. And I don't know if you asked, or just heed to the parks board, get on their agenda to talk. I really don't know what they have as far as their ethical code of conduct is. I think the only thing, Jim corrected, I'm wrong, I think the only thing that can keep anybody from serving is the felony conviction, or felonious misconduct in office, and then upheld by a jury, but I don't, until that would come about, I think the answer would really go to the parks board, because they are an elected body in and of themselves, you know, voters elect them. Years ago, they set up the park board, and so we have certain, say, or the park board, mainly it's financial.
Budget.
Money, yeah, and then they make, they have their own set of rules, and their own, their own, my laws, I guess. Okay. So I, I would direct you there, I mean.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, go.
The park commission needs the second quarter during tomorrow.
Okay.
And it's next Monday, and we have.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, any other public comments? Doctor speaking, this is Jim.